Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October 28th. Audrey, can you have the record show that our city attorneys, city planners, the engineer are present? Councilmember Dunlap is present, councilmember Gady is absent, councilmember Dahl is present, and councilmember Moore is present, along with our assistant city administrator and our city administrator. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is a special recognition of our 2024 photo contest winners. This is the city of Atsigo's eighth annual photo contest. There were seven participants that submitted a total of ten photos. We had 295 votes that were cast online and 245 that happened during the Prairie Festival. The city council would like to thank all the participants for their submission in showcasing the city of Atsigo. The city will now present a certificate of recognition, their photo framed, and $100 to this year's winner, which we have two. The viewers, and I will invite them up together, because they happen to be sisters, I believe. The viewer's choice online winner this year is Lauren Burning, who submitted "Icicles on a Tractor." And the viewer's choice at the Prairie Festival was Katie Burning, who submitted "Farm at Sunset." So we'll come down, and I will pass each of you guys a certificate and your check, and then your photos framed. The council, if they come down. Okay, next one is Lauren. Yes. We can all go back, should we do this, and I will take her photo from Lauren. Thank you so much, everyone. This is her photo. If you can see it. So here's your photo frame. Here's your certificate. And your check is on the back. And then Katie did her photo picture. Is "Farm at Sunset." Beautiful, huh? Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys want to take a picture with us? All right. There, that's her photo. I can see your certificate. Thank you. We'll make sure you get the five. Where would you girls like to be? Where would you guys like to be? It's your day. Oh, come on, you're the center. All right.
What's up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, we are moving on to our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where residents can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Hello, Jeannie Holland, county commissioner. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So first of all, I want to thank Sabrina for coming. We've had some cannabis meetings. I just want to share with you that the county has a new, which I'm sure Adam also has found out, that the GIS now has a nice way of, because we're going to be doing, we're going to be setting the setbacks, which are going to be very close to the tobacco. And then the, our projects team and GIS has a map that you can go and punch in your city, and then it'll tell you the dimension of where you can actually have a retail store in your city. It's a very nice, we're very proud of it, proud of our team, and I'm sure Sabrina will tell you that is quite impressive. And then, but I think it's going to be a while before we see any kind of retail coming around for a while, because the state's still in influx. That Department of Cannabis is still struggling. So, might be another year yet, we don't know. But anyways, as we're at with that, and then I want to tell you that we, I know I talked to you guys last spring, like, early summer, about the HOA that is in your city. Anyways, we, I want to introduce Roxanne. Roxanne's the gal who has no skin in the game. She, her insurance paid for her $18,600 roof, thankfully. But unfortunately, many of her neighbors didn't get that opportunity. She has, as I told you before, set, had a report that went out, and then, along with me and county attorney Lutes, submitted to the Attorney General in April. Haven't heard anything, although they are inundated with a lot of HOA matters. And now, the Minnesota Reformer Magazine has interviewed Roxanne, and last week came out with an article. And then, because of that article, we also had the Insurance Federation CEO, who also happens to be the city councilman for Albertville, Aaron Cocking, put in that there is a lot of insurance fraud that he's seeing from just what he has read. And if he, when he reads the report, he will be quite surprised that there is a lot. There's, there's a lot of moving pieces. It's alarming to many people on all ends. And so, yeah, I gave you the articles that came in first, came in second. We're, we're happy that it's, and now made the forefront. There is also a work group that Senator Lucero is, is him and a few other senators have brought together. And Roxanne and I are going to be testifying at the end of November. This is hopefully to get some legislation in, like, next year, when, when they go back into session, we can get some legislation. Because right now, an HOA is basically a sovereign nation. You can't, they, anybody can't. I call, I talked to the Department of Commerce, and there's no oversight. There's no oversight for, on any level. And he, the Department of Commerce can oversee bad landlords, but they can't do anything about bad HOA. So, that, that would be nice to see. I would like you guys to, you know, if you have any input as to what you'd like to see, Roxanne and I would love to hear what you have to say. Any kind, we, we do need to make changes in this arena. On the flip side, I also know from a city standpoint, an HOA is very nice, because, you know, it does take care of the unruly neighbors that, you know, you, we see in other cities that, you know, for instance, last week, Albertville's been dealing with somebody for 11 years for not cleaning up and going, they keep having to go to court, say, clean, can't clean up their yards. So, there is, there is good things about HOAs, but the sad thing about the HOAs is that they can be taken advantage of. And in this case, we're seeing rampant, you know, just the fact that, and I think Mayor Stockcamp, you saw when you went to the HOA, that they wouldn't give their phone numbers out, the board, and then they were ultimately having to call the gas and management company, and then therefore were charged. So, many of the people in, there's a lot of liens in that property right now, and a lot of them have not just the amount that they were originally charged for a roof, but they've also been charged for legal fees. And that's really sad, and we have one in foreclosure, hoping to save him from foreclosure. It's looking like the county's going to be able to help him a little bit. But it's very alarming as to how many people put their houses up for sale in that development this year. And then, when you look in the recorder's office, they're, they're in, they either have a lien for the, like, for the roof, or they're in foreclosure. So, it's sad, because where, where will they go? That's their home. So, but yeah, I'd like you to meet Roxanne, Roxanne Williams, and she can introduce herself, and.
Thank you. So, Jeannie mentioned that there were, you mentioned one article. There were two articles posted last week by the Minnesota Reformer. If anybody's interested, I did print up extra copies. But, so, to start with, and I'll try to just hit the high points. There's so much, like you had mentioned, there's a lot of moving parts, and there are. But, so, when I was looking for a place to buy in 2012, so I've been there for 12 years, I really wanted a single-family home, but ultimately, I bought a townhouse. And I really didn't, I wasn't crazy about the idea, because I thought, I really like to mow lawns. I mean, I would mow my mom's lawn, I like the smell of green grass. And, and in this case, not only can't I do it, I have to pay somebody else to do it. But then also, too, there's the convenience side of it. Somebody else will take care of the snow plowing and the shoveling of the sidewalk, and so that's a positive. And then I also got to think after a couple of years, but there's another benefit, too, and that is that I know, being in an HOA, I'm not going to have junkers in the yard next door to me. So there's that positive. And so, I've been here for 10 years, and everything was really great. And quite honestly, I was never involved in the HOA, I never went to a single meeting until all of a sudden last fall. And it, it, to say that what has happened is appalling, horrendous is an understatement, it is just appalling what has happened. So I'll just give you a couple highlights. So, for example, when it was decided that all, and by the way, this is a new roof replacement for all 96 units. When that decision was made for all 96 units to be replaced, it took place, that decision, in one single meeting. No residents were present, shame on us, but no residents were present. The property management company was there, along with the board, and not only did they talk about it for the very first time, but they made the decision, they were already at the contract stage in one hour. In one hour, one meeting, they voted to move forward with the contract and move forward with the roof replacement. It was also appalling to see, as I was investigating, and I've done a heck of a lot of investigating. As Jeannie mentioned, I had no skin in the game, but it was appalling to me, so much so that I decided, I want to get to the root of that, someone find out what's going on. I discovered that the contract that our president signed at that time, he signed it one week bef, well, one week after that meeting is when they originated that contract. I verified the date with DocuSign. So they originated it one week later, and one week later is, one week after that is when he signed it. And this is before the storm actually even happened. Right on the contract, it shows the date that it was originated, a week later was the supposed storm. And in this contract, no mention whatsoever of price. He signed this contract, no price whatsoever. Who would know, who would be signing, who would buy a car and agree to sign it, or sign to buy it and not know what the price is? It just is asinine, I can't believe that this happened. So then I found out in speaking with people, that, well, they said, but it's okay, because the property management company said, well, they'll just do it for the price that the insurance company says it's valued at. Well, I also found out, when we hired them, two and a half years prior, the property management company, they kind of put all the pieces in place, they brought in their own insurance guy, who's, who lives in North Carolina, who is now our insurance agent. They also brought in, I mean, they kind of put all these pieces in place, and it, it, it has just been appalling what has happened. And another thing that happened, too, is, early on, I called our property manager when this was all first kind of erupting, and I said, "Did you have any competitive bids?" And she said, "Yes, we had three." Actually, come to find out, she told other people, "No, we had zero," but she told me they had three. Well, as I was kind of processing, thinking about all of this, I thought, this is not making sense to me. I, I am not feeling good about this, so I decided, I'm going to start an email string. At this point, they had already had a notice that said, "By the way, we're going to have a free food truck and free pumpkins." It was one year ago, like, today, a couple days before Halloween, when they did this. And so, because there was a sign on the truck, at the free food truck, and the free pumpkins, I now knew who the winning contractor was. So I decided, this is not feeling right to me, I started a meet, an email string, and I said, "I now know who the winning contractor is, who are the other two?" So she wrote back with a name, parentheses, 2022, another name, parentheses, 2022. I thought, that makes no sense. This was a July 13, 2023 supposed storm. So I decided, I'm going to investigate and call these two people. So I called the first one, and he said, "Well, where do you do work at your HOA?" "But we work on the porches and the decks." "We were asked in the spring of 2022 to provide a quote for roofing, but it was for one unit, not 96, and nothing came of it." So then I called the second one, and he said, "Well, yes, I was asked to come out and inspect your roofs." And he said, "I did that, and I found minimal to zero damage, there was nothing to provide a quote on." Those were the two quotes that she provided. So as I did further investigation, I went on to the property management company, only to find out, the contractor, it's their own company. So, no bids, no competitive bids, their own company. The price, I'll, I'll just go, I'll just say one more thing about the price. So I've also talked with contractors about, what would you charge if you would have done this job? And I, I spoke with three contractors, two of them gave me the identical price. And you might think, but how is that possible? How can they give the identical price? Well, it was based on X amount, $650 per square of shingles. And if you don't know, one square is 100 square feet. So, one, $650 per square, so that told me, that is the standard going price in the industry. And then, one resident, who is a 20-year owner of a roof, roofing contractor, that lives right with us, he said he would have done it for even less. So $650 would equate to $11,050 per unit? They charge us $20,600 per unit. It's just outrageous what they've done. And so, there are, in fact, people that have had tremendous impact. So, so Jeannie mentioned that there's somebody that's been evicted already or foreclosed upon. I believe there may be three, don't quote me on that, but I think there may be three. Another individual we're working with right now to hopefully save him. Another person who right now has over $20,000 on her account, that probably isn't going to be able to, to make that, and won't be able to swing it. And I also talked to, for example, another woman who is elderly, and she said, "Well, now that she's got this big bill," she was in the hospital having surgery for a week at the time this was all unfolding, and she said, "Now, not only can't I retire, I have to work an extra year, and I can't buy the hospital bed that I need for being comfortable." It, it, and so, this just, this is not just our HOA, this is the industry. And I'm just really hoping that somehow legislatively, we can get attention on a big scale, because this type of thing is well beyond our little HOA. It's just outrageous what happens. It's like a high-profit, unregulated industry, and I sure hope that something can change.
Roxanne, I thank you for stepping up, because I talked to you before, and as you said, you had no skin in the game, but you were doing this for all your neighbors. So, thank you for all your investigative work.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you joke to me or Senator Lucero, if there's anything that you guys see on your level that you'd like to relay to that housing group, because I think that's really important at this point, so that when we hit the ground running next year at the legislature, we have all the pieces, so we can fight for all your citizens. Because, like we said, on this side of Ray County, there's a lot of HOAs, and so we want our residents protected, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
All right, we are still in our open forum, but anyone else like to comment? Okay, we will close open forum and move to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda, the motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Brittany, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item 4.1, fire protection agreement with the city of Albertville.
Mayor and city council, in your packet for the meeting tonight is an amended fire protection agreement from the city of Albertville. So I understand this was a topic of discussion at the meeting on October 21st. Staff did receive this redlined agreement that's in your packet last Thursday, including it for discussion and review with the city council. With that, I can go into a few areas that differ from what the current contract outlines. So, at its core, the current contract was something adopted in November of 2022 by both cities. Went into implementation in January of 2023. That was the most current and recent version, the city's been contracting with Albertville for many years. So that contract was auto-renewing, the current contract. The proposal from the city of Albertville, paragraph one, outlines a term for the contract of January 1, 2025, through December 31st of 2025. So that's probably the largest shift in terms of the contract terms, shifting from an annual auto-renewal to something that does have a term included, so. That would be something the council should discuss. For the most part, the rest of the agreement is some minor additions here and there, some terminology. There is an example of what the contract calculation is included in paragraph two. So those numbers largely being updated from when this contract was originally put in place many years ago to better reflect what those market values, tax capacities, budgets, and contract rates actually are. So again, that's an example in paragraph two. Looking further throughout the agreement, I mean, for the most part, paragraph one is the one where I would want to discuss with the council on how you want to proceed with that. Paragraph eight is potentially another one, where it's outlining a date in which Albertville would propose the 2026 fire budget. And does include some dates for adoption of the agreement by both cities. So that's another one that could be discussed. It does mention the 2026 fire budget in that paragraph, but again, paragraph one only mentions service for 2025, so. I can answer any questions from the council. I have passed this along to the city attorney. So city attorney Kendall has reviewed and can answer any legal questions from the mayor and council as well. But again, staff is looking for review and discussion of this contract and direction on how to proceed from that, so.
Dave, do you have any comments?
I really don't at this time, Mayor. I think Adam summarized the changes correctly. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
I'll start it off. And I just talked to John when I, John's here from Albertville. And there was discussion at that meeting, specifically their mayor brought it up in saying, you know, can we write it in for two years? I guess I would be looking for, you know, the first paragraph only goes through December 31st, 2025, but in paragraphs eight, it talks about that there is an option for 2026. But we know that we need protection for, for sure, two years. So, I guess that's my first talking point with that, is that could that, we have a further discussion on that item?
But, I think.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I think that's because we can't change 2025. Because of the contract terms, we can, we can only affect 2026 at this point. So I think that's why the contract is written that way.
Correct, the, the current version of the mayor and council, it does include a 365-day termination that, that is within the bed of the current contract, so councilmember Dunlap would be correct.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is that we could ask to include the two years.
Correct, if, if, I mean, that would be a staff recommendation to at least pose the question to the city of Albertville, if they'd be interested in, in expanding paragraph one to account for both 2025 and 2026.
Were you going to say?
Just on that comment, I would say, I would be surprised if they came back and said that they were, based on my understanding of the conversation at that Albertville meeting, I was there, so.
I would still recommend the city at least ask that question, if it's something that can be negotiated between the two cities to change it. Paragraph one, again, to add service through 2026.
Yeah, I'm for that, too. Sure, 2026 is covered.
Madam Mayor, I do have that in my notes here, just to touch base on. I also just wanted to bring up, obviously, this, this is the draft. So if we go back and ask them about having two years versus the one year, as far as something being finalized, because this is in effect January 2025. When will that conversation be had then, after this? And we'll come back to council as far as their decision and how they're feeling about having the contract extended for two years versus one.
They have city council meetings opposite of us, so their meeting would be next week. So I assume if we request changes, we would be, they would, it would be on their agenda. And I'm looking out to John, because he's obviously a council member, he's present.
I think we have until September of next year to decide that.
Well, but, well, I guess, why not get it in place? And I mean, as I said, I just spoke with John before the meeting, and he, both of us said, "Why can't it be decided in the next month and a half to work between and see if that they would be open to it?" Because at the last meeting, Jillian did say, you know, her point was just that, we should be working together, and that's obviously all of our goals, too, to make sure that our residents are safe and protected, but that we have something in place. I think, I, I guess I'm just, we can ask the question, and.
Would we then move this to, I believe, the first, they're the first Monday in November for their council meeting? So we'd have this go to, would we delay this to our second, or our first meeting, and was it November 12th?
I don't think we would delay it, I think, as Adam said, these, this is the draft. So we're going through, like, if we see that there's items that we need to be looking out for what's best for our residents or to make this contract moving forward, work, that's what we're here doing tonight.
Madam Mayor, I think I would not feel comfortable, again, just having a motion tonight for a year. That means that people will not have services for a year. And I also think that a contract should, it is a talking point, it's having that conversation, and no question's a dumb question, it'd be good to just ask. And yeah, I'm just, this be a, this is a topic of conversation, so it would be nice to ask them to have the two years versus the one year.
Yeah, mayor, council, just to clarify, that the council could accept and approve this agreement tonight, if, if there was a motion to do that. I, I do think staff, myself and the city attorney would recommend that at least posing the question about the term of the contract and see where it goes from there.
Sorry, I was going to say, to me, it doesn't make sense to not approve it, because then, I mean, if they come back and they say, "Well, we're only comfortable with one year," which, like I said, that seemed to be the discussion based on my, when I was at that meeting. So if they come back and they say, "No, we're only interested in, in really one year for now, until you guys kind of figure things out," would we say no to that? No, of course not. So, I think it only makes sense to approve it tonight. And if they, if we want to start looking at 2026, then we can certainly do that. But Albertville's main contention was, there was, they're really unclear on what 2026 and 2027 looks like. they're really unclear on what two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-seven looks like. So I think they need more data from us.
Adam comments?
Mayor, myself and Chief Rousher meeting with the administrator and fire chief from the city of Albertville along with Sabrina on Wednesday, so I anticipate that will help provide some of the information that they currently may not have.
Madam Mayor, maybe I misspoke. I just want to make sure by approving this night that that is not set in stone and that comments were again heard that some of us have questions about paragraph one compared to paragraph eight and having that timeframe being more than a year. I mean, they're going for more than a year, having contracts more than a year. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Can you repeat it?
Yes. So my fears, again, that, you know, this contract is, I I'm not saying that I'm not I misspoke when I said that I wouldn't be approving or would be making motion and approve, but yes, to this night with this contract. I'm just reiterating the fact that this is a draft. It does not hurt to ask and pose the question of the contract dates and it being more than one year.
Right. I mean, I, I think I understand what you're saying. I think staff's recommendation would be to ask about the term.
Yes.
If that term remains to be unchanged or the city of Albertville wishes to keep the amendment as is, the city should still adopt this contract with them for two thousand and twenty-five. There would be no reason to recommend not doing that.
Yes, I just would like to ask the question.
Right. And and I'm not, I I'm just saying, it's, it's a draft and we're working between two councils, so obviously it was, what's their council, they gave input. Now it's in front of us and what's our input? And obviously, our job is to look out to make sure that we have something in place. It does give the date of September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five that we need to give them about two thousand and twenty-six, but why not write it and then say, we know that we need coverage in two thousand and twenty-six? That's where I guess I'm coming at it with.
Mayor, I guess I would just say paragraph eight talks about, you know, by September first, two thousand and twenty-five, Atsigo shall notify Albertville if it desires to enter into a contract for fire protection for two thousand and twenty-six. Sounds like there's a lot of discussion in the council that there probably would be interest, so you can, you know, ask staff to at least explore that possibility now. You you have the option under this draft to wait until September of twenty-five. You don't have to wait until September of twenty-five. You could explore that earlier than that if you wanted to.
Well, I guess that's where I'm going with it. I mean, Eric made a, the chief of line made a comment about presenting their council with two budgets next year, saying with us in or with us out, and their council, you know, shook their head as though they were agreeing to that. But it's a benefit for them to know that we're in for that next year for planning purposes, and we need the protection, so. I guess that's what I'm saying. Also, other comments?
I think Albertville's concern, again, I'm just kind of paraphrasing because I was at the meeting, is is really around, let's see, the fourth whereas clause, and it's also in paragraph nine. Whereas it is understood that any future shared emergency response between the two departments will require a fire protection agreement for service.
Do you mean the sixth whereas?
The the fourth new one, I guess. But yes, the sixth whereas.
Yes. And and I have a note there too, and obviously, as you said, they're concerned about that. We have staff meeting and there's still plenty of time. I mean, that was even brought up at their meeting that they said we need to know where we're moving forward and what that looks like. They talked about is that, that they needed to dive deeper is what I had in my notes from that meeting last Monday night. So I think there's lots of clarification and and even their council said, we just need to know where they're at with things. So I didn't, you may have been at a meeting before that, but what I'm referring to is the meeting last week where the council seemed, and they all said, yes, we're ready to send this forward to the city of Atsigo. But also, it was their city administrator, so they were having a meeting with our city administrator at that time too and shared it with their council. So I didn't. It it seemed to me that they weren't willing to close the door on the situation, so if you feel differently, then that's your take of the meeting.
No, in fact, I think the the mayor of Albertville said that she didn't want to leave, I mean, her desire, and I think the council, the Albertville council shares, they're not looking to leave every, anyone in the dirt, I think is what she said. But we're kind of talking around the issue. The issue is what happens in two thousand and twenty-seven? And and Albertville is looking at it as, we need to plan in two thousand and twenty-six for what happens. Because we've been told multiple times that mutual aid is something that we can rely on from the city of Albertville. This contract makes it clear that's not going to happen.
But this contract also said that they need to, that we need to figure out what that is, and I have still need to happen outside of this contract, that that would be moving forward in two thousand and twenty-seven, which is outside of what this contract has anything to say with.
Paragraph number nine. If Albertville and Atsigo do not enter into a fire protection agreement for the two thousand and twenty-six calendar year, Albertville shall have no obligation to provide fire protection and or emergency medical services response to the Atsigo FSA after December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. In such event, Atsigo shall mail a notice to every address within the Atsigo FSA, notifying the owners and occupants of such properties that Albertville shall no longer provide such emergency service response to those properties. It is sad to me that the Albertville City Council seems to care more about Atsigo residents than the Atsigo City Council does.
I would disagree with that comment, right?
Me too. We're trying to figure out two thousand and twenty-six.
They're telling us, without a contract, you are not going to get service. They are not going to give us service for free.
No one is saying that we're asking for service for free.
That is what has been said from that lectern multiple times. We can no longer depend on mutual aid to supplement our service. Albertville is making that absolutely clear.
And we are talking two thousand and twenty-six when we wouldn't even have a department.
We don't even have anything yet. What's up, one fire chief?
But they have no idea what what happens in two thousand and twenty-six.
And Adam, are you correct by saying you haven't even had a meeting yet? You're having it on Wednesday? So and and Jillian said, we need to get these discussions started. So we have time to do that. I think this is what them saying, let's get the discussion started. I don't think they want to leave us in the dirt, as you said, and as Jillian said either. I I'm saying that we need to come up with a solution, but we're talking, we need to get something in place, and I'm saying I would like to see two thousand and twenty-six included in this contract. And obviously, the two thousand and twenty-seven plan would be a different contract.
I I think Albertville is telling us, no, it wouldn't.
Why wouldn't I?
Because, so, the the issue that has been causing so much frustration is that we have been told multiple times that we can depend on mutual aid to supplement our fire service in two thousand and twenty-seven and going forward. And Albertville is telling us that can't happen without a contract. Because as one council member in Albertville put it, there's going to be a giver and a taker in that situation. We would be the taker. We are not going to be able to provide mutual aid in that scenario. It's going to be very unmutual. So Albertville is telling us, you need a contract.
What also their chief said is, what number are we talking? Are we talking four hundred? Are we talking fifty? I mean, that's, that was said at that meeting too, Ryan.
It absolutely was, and isn't that a little bit scary? That we don't even know what our fire service looks like yet. Why is there so much, why is there such a lack of clarity?
Don't we have two years to plan? Or should we have planned this ten years ago?
Mayor, from the staff perspective, I I believe the council, and this has been laid out in a presentation to the council back in March, what the operational aspect looks like. That is not a tool that we have at our disposal in terms of staff on hand right now to actually implement. And so there is a certain level of uncertainty without having staff already hired as we're working through the station project to say for absolute certain what that model looks like. Until the city council gives the authority to hire emergency responders, there is uncertainty in what that looks like. What has been proposed does not include that certainty, but since those people are not yet hired, that's where that uncertainty is introduced. And without those tools on board, I can't have an absolute conversation with an administrator, a fire chief from another community and say, this is exactly what we're going to have in terms of staffing, in terms of equipment, because those things are not on staff yet. Those people are not here to respond to those incidents, and until the council, current or future, gives us those tools, there will be a certain level of uncertainty, and that's why the communication between the two communities as we progress over the next two years into the department becoming operational or or key.
Ryan, I have in my notes that there, Jillian says specifically, there's no reason that this could not be a two-year contract. She points out in paragraph nine, she didn't like that it sounds like they would, that it leaves them hanging. She was referring to us being hung. And it it appears like they were leaving us. So that's what I wrote in my notes. That's what she said. I I just, I I don't believe that they're going into this leaving us and they realize that we also need fire protection in that calendar year too.
And and that is not what I'm saying at all. Albertville is not in the wrong here. This is a completely.
I'm not saying that they're in the wrong here.
This is a completely reasonable position for them to take. What I'm saying is, this is them sending up a flare. This is them telling us, you are not going to be able to get mutual aid for free. It's going to cost you. And that is a, that is a good and reasonable position to take. If we were in their situation, we would be the exact same thing.
This is not about mutually. This is about them being our, that, them providing us protection.
Paragraph nine is about mutually.
Right.
The new whereas clauses are about mutually.
I understand, but I'm saying when we open up our fire department, there will be a different contract. It will look completely different than this.
Right, and that's why we don't know what two thousand and twenty-six or two thousand and twenty-seven looks like.
We do know that what two thousand and twenty-six looks like. We are planning to have Albertville protect the city in which they serve.
But we will have firefighters here in Atsigo. We will have trucks here in Atsigo. We will have a fire station here in Atsigo.
We've never talked about being the the fire station operational with people ready to go in two thousand and twenty-six.
Yep.
It's January one, twenty-seven.
Madam Mayor, I think a contract should be fair, so I think this is a good starting point to have a conversation and hopefully the two councils and communities can negotiate and and again, come to some sort of agreement where everyone is comfortable and residents feel are are protected.
One, I think we have update on that meeting, what you're gonna have.
Mayor, staff will communicate with the city of Albertville tomorrow and follow up with that. There are clearly other changes included in the contract, so I don't want to focus solely on the one paragraph. If there are other questions for city attorney Kendall or myself, I can respond to those. But generally, that was the one that I at least wanted to have the council discuss was the term, so.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I just think that this contract really, it should be a wake-up call. It should cause my colleagues to reconsider their position on this plan. I know it won't, but it should, because Albertville is the first. Elk River and Rogers will come next, and they will tell us, you're not going to get mutual aid for free. And that causes the whole plan to come into question, because one station is not going to cut it. We know that. We know that from the study. The study said we would need four fire stations to match the performance of our contract providers. And so it just begs the question, why are we doing this? Canceling the contracts and putting a station in the middle of our city makes absolutely no sense.
Ryan, that's your interpretation of what you continue to say is the contract of of the studies.
It's plain language in the study. The study said, canceling the contracts and putting a station in the middle of the city results in the poorest performance of all of the scenarios they examined. And this is why, because we're supposed to be able to have the contracts.
Yes, Adam?
Mayor, the the study did identify and outline matrix or metrics, sorry, metrics for different levels of response. So there was four-minute drive time, which would largely mirror what a career or a duty crew model would represent. And there was also a six-minute drive time, which largely would mirror more of a paid-on call or a volunteer model. And so there were different scenarios and different metrics in the study based on the number of stations, based on the type of staffing that was outlined for each of those as well. So for most of the six scenarios, there are station locations for a four-minute and a six-minute response time, okay?
Madam Mayor, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the fire protection agreement as amended between the city of Albertville and the city of Atsigo.
Second.
Is there any discussion? My discussion will be that I want a request of a change of language to add.
Mayor, I want a clarification on the motions of your.
I guess I'm asking.
Based on the discussion, I would have expected a different motion, but I just need clarification from.
I would have also.
Sorry, I just thought we were having the conversation and then we would have, staff would go back and ask them, when you meet with them tomorrow or when you have that conversation about the two year, so we can change.
But your motion is that you'd be accepting what's in writing right here.
The the council has two options. They can approve the fire protection agreement as included in your packet amended from the city of Albertville. Or this council can provide direction on any feedback to post questions for different verbiage within the contract, which would then be revised pending the city of Albertville and represented to the council for adoption.
Okay.
If there's terms in what is in front of you tonight and included in your packet that you wish to have further discussions on, your motion should not be to approve the contract.
Do you want, so you want specific dates then for, was that best to have?
Would you prefer just come back clean with those amendments?
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know. I mean, my understanding of the conversation up until now was there was, I think, consensus to direct staff to go back and continue negotiating the contract. So either there's, there would be no formal motion, you could table this to a future date for consideration of any revisions, or you could just direct staff to go back. But I don't think, I didn't understand that member Moore's wanted to make a motion to approve this contract as it sits here tonight. So I think the motion would either be to table it to a future meeting for staff to go back and have futures, further discussions or just direct staff to do that.
That's what I asked earlier. We should go back.
I'm really struggling to understand the point of that. If they come back and they say, no, we're only going to give you a year for now until we know more, we're gonna tell them no?
I don't think we're gonna tell them no, but if if we're negotiating and asking them and saying, this is what we would feel comfortable with for our residents. I mean, Ryan, you've said it many times that you just need to write the contracts better.
Right. This, this is the clarity that we need. This is great. I love this. I'm ready to approve this. Albertville is absolutely in the right, and I want to let them know they are in the right.
Who are you representing in that situation?
Atsigo residents, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question because.
Because this, like I said, is the wake-up call. This contract is the wake-up call. It should cause every council member to to reconsider their idea to cancel the contracts.
We're not canceling the contracts. We need the contracts in place.
I'm talking two thousand and twenty-seven. Albertville is telling us, you need a contract now forward.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-seven will have her own fire station and department.
Mayor, I believe there is a motion.
There is a motion in a second.
So just so I'm clear, is that motion to table this while staff goes back for additional discussions with Albertville?
I have to defer that to the person who made the motion.
Yes, I, yes, I'm, my, that was my request, is to have a conversation and have that negotiation between Albertville and Atsigo.
Uh, Mayor, so just your motion was a mistake. What was written in the RCA is what the motion was actually made, so I don't know if we need to make either a second motion or they need a vote opposing what that motion was. That's.
He made a motion to approve what's here.
So the language that she wrote is not what the direction was.
Well, she could rescind it.
Yeah, I think at this point, we just need a motion. We either withdraw that motion. And then she can make a different motion, table it, and let staff. Go back and have further discussion.
I put the floor to Brittany. She's the one who made the motion.
I move for the question that's on the table.
Mayor, we have a.
Yeah.
A sitting motion, second that need to be clarified before additional motions.
Yeah. So there was a previous motion and a second to approve this contract as it is.
Yes.
Question's now been called, but I think you have to vote on that. My understanding is that. A number of people would be against that so that the council could then direct staff to go back and have further discussions.
That is correct. Okay, so Ryan called for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Just point of inform, point of clarification. What are we voting on right now?
This would be approval of this contract as it sits here before you tonight.
With no changes.
With no changes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. All right, is there a new motion or direction to staff? Again, it is Albertville's draft. And my request would be that staff brings this to their council. They have council members present tonight in our audience. That we look to adjust and add the term.
Twenty twenty six, yep. That would be the, that's what I'm looking for.
Is that okay to give direction? Adam?
That that's fine, may city attorney.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you could make a motion to table this to a future meeting so that staff can bring it back after that discussion.
Then I will make a motion to table this, uh, to bring it back to a later council meeting after staff has had a chance to talk with Albertville. Staff in the council is can weigh in on our discussion.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Okay, next item is consider scheduling a meeting of the Economic Development Authority. Adam.
Mayor and council, uh, staff would request of, uh, the city council schedule a meeting of the Economic Development Authority. Uh, for November twelfth at five thirty P M. Uh, the purpose of the Economic Development Authority meeting would be to review a draft finance plan related to the lease revenue bonds being proposed. For the fire and emergency services station project. So. Representative Jessica Green from Northland Securities would be there to guide the EDA commissioners, uh, through the conversation. Uh, finance plan typically includes an overview of the issuance and executive summary of the project. Uh, some statutory authority, uh, discussion on structuring the bonds, uh, issuance process. And to review preliminary payment and levy schedules as well. So. Uh, that would be, uh, what would be on the agenda. Uh, again, the finance plan, uh, for that. So staff looking for direction to set up a median for the EDA.
Council, questions or motions?
My toes is, Mayor, like my motion. Motion to schedule a meeting of the Atsigo Economic Development Authority on November twelfth, twenty twenty four at five thirty P M to be held at Perry Center.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to be opposing this motion because the only reason that the EDA is meeting is to continue this. Problem of creating a lease revenue bond, an EDA lease revenue bond, which is going to cost the taxpayers an extra million dollars just to avoid. A petition, just to avoid having this issue on the ballot next week. So, um, I don't think the EDA even needs to meet, and that's why I'm going to be opposing this.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Okay, we have city council reports and updates. First item is Heritage Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, HPC Matt, and we had a nice little rundown, um, and a little PowerPoint of. The Shippo Conference that they have to attend every year. Um, it was held in Red Wing. Um, this year and they had, the woman, the commissioner of the wind had a great time, um, learned a lot and. Felt that it was kind of her first time going, so she was again very, very excited that. They offered this and she learned a lot, so that was good. Otherwise, that's all I really have for them. There's not a whole lot.
Okay, next Park and Rec Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we, um, discussed the. It's called the multiplayer unit, which is at now the Frieder Park, uh, that is in style now and people have been using it, kids have been using it. That's pretty much, we were just talking about budget, you know, we reviewed budget with commissioners and. Wasn't a whole lot at Park and Rec either.
Okay. Uh, Planning Commission, I have no updates. Uh, Public Safety. Tina's not present, but we were able to tour the Wright County. Jail. And that was, that was really nice. We met with Sean Derringer. And we were able to, um, actually go into the units. Um, Ryan was present at that also. Um, and just talk about. I mean, we went, we got to tour everything. It was, I, we had to wait to go in during lockdown. Um, so we got to see kitchens and. Uh, where they're, where they, um, like their activity center, gym area, and they got to go into a unit that's not. Um, currently housing inmates and got to see, um, kind of what the structure would look like on a typical day. For the person that would be responsible. So, um, it it was a great tour. Um, thanks Wright County for letting us come out, so. That was our tour. We, I mean, it was, it was a long night, actually. I think we were there like two and a half hours.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it was a good night. We saw our under council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? I'd like to add, so tonight we accepted on item three point three under Autumn Woods commercial. I did get an email along with Jeannie Holland, our Wright County Commissioner, um, from, uh, an employee there. That Braxton Wolf that wanted to share that his, um, boss and 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 employer. That he works at NCS and that he wanted to recognize the owner Sean Gagnon for being an outstanding veteran advocate. And that he goes above and beyond in his community. Um, he had asked for some ideas of how he could recognize. That certain person and that business in our community. And I think both Jeannie and I didn't have any specific solutions, but I. Felt that it was appropriate to share with the rest of the council that, um, I I think it's great when we have somebody take the time to. Acknowledge businesses that are in our community for doing great things. And so I wanted to share it with the rest of you guys. So. Again, uh, it sounds like a great employer and somebody that really cares about and passionate about his community and veterans. So. Does anyone else have anything? Next is staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. No updates.
Okay, Adam?
Mayor, a reminder that city offices are closed November eleventh, that is Veterans Day. And due to that, uh, the way the calendar falls, the next meeting will be on a Tuesday. So Tuesday, November twelfth is the next council meeting date, uh, due to the Veterans Day.
Adra.
Thank you, Mary. Just wanted to give a little elections update. We've been very busy at City Hall with voters. Um, we will be open, uh, tomorrow night, Tuesday till seven P M for extended voting hours. And we'll also be open this Saturday and Sunday from nine A M to three P M for people that want to come and vote early. Otherwise, elections are then Tuesday, November fifth, and voters will be able to go to the polls from seven A M to eight P M. And if anybody has had any questions, please call City Hall.
Thank you to all of your staff for. For, uh, running this. It sounds like it's been very smooth from.
Thank you. I'll share that news.
Yeah, absolutely. Dave.
No reports. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Dan.
Mayor? No update.
Rod?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Seventy Fifth Street, that's open and paved, if you recall from a meeting or so ago, but that's been. Completed and at the assessment hearing on, uh, the street rental. We've contacted the three property owners and are working on rectifying those concerns. So those should be taken care of and then. Uh, the sprinkler systems have been addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Wright County. Good evening.
Evening. Uh, at one point I wanted to touch on today, which I'm assuming. Uh, you've seen on Facebook over last weekend was the recent car, some car thefts, if you haven't already. So there was two nights, um, and I just want to clarify, they're both different. So there was the ones on the south half of the city, um, on. Due to seventieth, uh, off of one oh one, basically areas around one oh one. And that that was on that one night. And then there was, uh, also car thefts the the next night, uh, on the northern half, and they're unrelated. So, um, it doesn't fit the profiles of the two different, uh, criminal groups. So one's more out of the city. Uh, fortunately for that one, which was seemed to be the higher grossing damages, uh. Uh, the vehicle was identified. Uh, license plate did match and there are potential suspects, um, as related to other. Criminal activity throughout the state. So, um, that's about as far as I know that, um.
So you have the details, but has that person or group been?
Not that I'm aware of. Basically, it's more of an inter-county kind of thing. So.
Oh, okay.
Some, you know, uh, again, above my pay grade of of where it's going to go. So it it would be along with detectives. So I can refer back to that. To the next meeting if you want, to see if that could, it's going to get anywhere. So.
Okay.
But it should, there's promise for that one. The other one, unfortunately, since it's unrelated, uh, there's still yet to be. Uh, some follow-up on that to see if we can get any more identifying. Uh, charis- characteristics to continue on with that one. So, uh, I just wanted to address that since, I don't know if you've been, uh. Getting a lot of comments or concerns this past week about that. So, and just to be a say on that for. Residents, keep your doors locked for your cars and your driveways. Uh, Atsigo is a very nice and normally safe city, but. Fortunately, people do travel through and are are up to no good. So lock your doors to your cars, uh. Keep things like purses out of, uh. Out of them so they can't, so they're not going to be broken into. And then if you do see something suspicious on your camera, which is the reason why we caught these people or. Have had such a good investigative lead as we have so far is because someone saw it immediately and then called it. So. Uh, don't sit and wait. So feel free to just call. Well, that's what we're here for. Any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, you.
All right, if no one has anything else, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Smooth.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.